Good morning. It is Tuesday, October 12. I'd like to call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you're able and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I would just like to read a statement from the Board of Supervisors. It is with great sadness that we share that Brad Tendall passed away on Sunday, October 10th, 2021. Please join us in keeping the entire Tendall family in our thoughts and prayers. Brad was of Story County for nearly four years since November of 2017 and served as an Equipment Operator 3 in the Secondary Roads Department. To acknowledge his service in memory, Secondary Roads will retire Brad's radio call number. As part of Brad's work family, we also grieve his loss. Brad will be sorely missed. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. We also want to remind employees that the Employee Assistance Program is available to those who are interested in using it. Please contact your supervisor or the H. R. Director for more information. Next, we'll move on to adoption of today's agenda. I do want to note one correction that under the Consent Agenda item number seven, under Road Closures Resolution 22-18, it should say Sherman Township, not Richland Township. Next is the time for public comments. Comments are used for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment? And if you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and we'll unmute you to make comment. And you use star nine, too. Anyone wanting to make a We have no agency reports today. Next, we move on to the consideration of the October 2021 minutes. Move approval of the October 20 minutes. Second, then moved in seconded, Markin, five, Basil, five, Kevin, five. Next, to consideration of personnel actions. Move approval of consideration of personnel actions. Second, then move to the seconded, Basil, five, Markin, seven, five. Next, we have consideration of the October 14th claims. Move approval of claims presented. Second, then move in seconded, Markin, five, Basil, five. Next, we have consent agenda. Anyone willing to take part in consent agenda?
I would move approval of consent agenda with the previous need to correction.
Second motion, then moved in seconded, Basil, five, Markin, five, Kevin, five. Next, we will move on to public hearing items. We have the second consideration of ordinance number 296, amending chapter 89. Home Business and Science.
Good morning.
Good morning, Amelia.
This is second consideration. See at first consideration last week. We've received no more comments since then, and there were no changes recommended. So when that happens, we recommend that you approve on second consideration and wait for consideration. So that's alternative one on the screen, and otherwise I'll take questions.
Kevin, question? You said you heard no additional comments?
No.
Thanks. If you don't have questions, we're not open up the public hearing. I just want to make sure you didn't have any questions first. All right, I will open the public hearing on consideration of ordinance 296, amending chapter 89 in the Home Business and Science Chapter 85.08 and Definitions 29.10. If anyone would like to make comments, please unmute yourself by using the raise hand function or doing star nine. Wait a few seconds to see if there's anyone who would like to unmute themselves. Does not look like anyone has any comment to make, so we will close the public hearing. Any further comments? Any reason not to raise your consideration?
No, it's unless you want it, I don't know, another week for folks to provide comments.
An out there quite well.
Yeah.
Okay. I would move adoption ordinance number 296 on Resolution. I would move approval board is 296 and on second consideration and wait for consideration. I didn't see that in recommendations. Then moved in seconded, Markin, five, Basil, five. I think we will hold off on the additional items from Dr. Passion. I do not speak online yet. I know this can be done a little later yet this morning. We are going through it relatively quickly, so I might try to text and you can zoom on a little bit earlier. So if we could have Darren go on to departmental reports.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. First, I just want to say I was planning on being there in person this morning, but my wife and two kids came down with something yesterday. Hopefully, it's just a bad cold, but they're all getting tested today, and so I thought I better just stay isolated. Starting out with the maintenance work. It's been a pretty unusual year this year with the amount of unexpected bridge and covert work that came up. Fortunately, our maintenance crews accomplished a lot this year in repairing those, and kudos to them and also to Mother Nature with the dry weather that really helped us getting stuff under the bridges and the coverts replaced. Lastly, we're still seeing supply issues and higher prices on a lot of things. Paint, wood, metal, coverts, and signage. We're hoping that improves next year, but we're hearing that might continue into another year, so that complicates things. But we'll see how that goes. We're trying to stock up on as much stuff as we can in the meantime. Moving on to construction updates, we had 10 projects this year. They were all completed except for the last one, the Collins Seven Bridge. That's about halfway completed, and we hope to get that done here in the next week or two. So that will complete all of our construction work for this year. Moving down to road use tax and bond funds, I just wanted to comment. We're probably not going to be able to show any revenue shortfalls to qualify for the ARPA funding this year. I did want to mention that we may have around $750,000 left in unspent bond money that I'd like to propose we use on some of our other local construction projects. If the 220th Street paving project does not move forward, and we can discuss that further as part of our budget meetings. FEMA funding from a duration, we're getting really close to having all of our approvals from FEMA and getting things wrapped up. So we anticipate receiving approximately $184,000 for the debris removal and around $20,000 for the sign damage. Move down to City of Ames Construction. There's a few issues going on with the City of Ames right now. One, the Grant Avenue and West 190th stoplight installation. The stoplights went active last week, and so far, so good. Haven't heard any new accidents or anything that happened since, so it's went well. And our lower speed limit took effect 45 mile an hour through the area as well last week. So we'll continue to monitor that. You probably know the Lincoln Way closure happened, and that is, could last up to eight months, eight months. So 600th Avenue, which is the county road, is the official detour taking it over to Highway 30. And then lastly, the Irons Bike Path was completed up to West 190th a couple of weeks ago. It's a little unusual that the City of Ames required that bike path to go up to West 190th, so they, or the inspectors on that job. When they connected into West 190th, we noticed they made some changes on the fly and turned the bike path kind of into the radius of the intersection with, which kind of made an obstruction if errant vehicles went off a GW carver. So we met with the city out there, and they have since removed that last stretch, and they plan to rebuild that so it goes straight as it was originally planned. Um, move down to the E18 Bridge Repair. This repair work started late last week, so I didn't have all the information when I put the, this report together. But we did complete the work, fortunately. That was a big project for us for a number of reasons. We had a tall wing that was all made out of wood piling and wood stringers that was deteriorated pretty badly, so we needed to get something done with that fairly quickly. So the fix was some very long sheet piling. It took a crane to come in, so we had to fill the road with dirt, so the crane didn't damage. The pavement was a very large crane. They were able to get in. We also had a fiber line in the way of the sheet piling, and I guess the timing worked out right. They got it moved midnight, the night before the sheet piling was driven. So that worked out, but it was right down to the last minute. Unfortunately, we're not able to get the sheet piling in the ground as far as we were originally planning. They had the biggest driver they could find. They had three of them, and they used the largest one. But we came up with another solution. We were able to get some more fill on the backside of the sheet piling to reinforce it. So we came up with a plan that will work, and so that project is completed and the road's back open to traffic. So that's a good project to have completed. Engineering technician just wanted to comment that we've been without a technician for almost a year now. It's a very difficult position to find. Engineering technicians are in high demand right now. So kind of been talking with Alyssa, maybe we need to start looking at some other options, maybe training somebody from the ground up. But we'll continue to work on getting somebody to fill that position. We really need somebody before next construction season because we struggled with having construction inspectors having enough this year, and we got just as much work next year. So that's a very high priority for us. Lastly, I just want to say thank you for your comments about Brad Tendall. He is a valuable member of our team, and he'll be greatly missed. Thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Any questions for Darren?
I just want to thank you, Darren, for all your work on that stump, stump line on Grant and 190th. We've been talking about that intersection for quite some time, and I've heard some positives from Gilbert School members and some other people about that. So thank you very much for working with the city to get through that and finding the findings for us to help contribute to get that done. Also, the E18 Bridge over Kegley, that's, you got on that really quickly, which is good because there's a lot of traffic on that road, so that was a big one. And lastly, I would say good catch on that bike path with the irons. I drove by it, and I thought, that's kind of strange to see that angled thing there. I'd never seen that before. And when you talked about how that could put bicyclists right kind of in the path of, you know, an accident if somebody goes off that intersection there, I think that was, I'm glad that you were, worked with the city again to get that taken care of because it's much, it's going to be much better, much safer. So those are the three things that I've kind of been following, that I really appreciate your good work on, and in particularly, when it involves working with another jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would also comment on completion of the 10 construction projects in spite of the supply chain issues and all the other challenges and being down a technician. Just thank you to you and your team for your work on that. And then as the construction technician or the engineering technician, is it, are we pretty in line with other counties as far as what our starting wage is? Do you know what we're offering as a start?
For the most part, yeah, we do struggle with being close to Polk County. They're offering quite a bit more. They have one open as well. But in general, we're pretty good. We might have to look at that again, but it's more supply issue of those employees. We have two schools, B Mac and Hawkeye Tech. B Mac does not have a graduating class this spring due to COVID, so that hurts as well. Hawkeye Tech has, I think, 11 graduating this spring, so we've put our message out to those students. So that's our goal, is try to get one of those, and if we don't, we're going to have to probably start looking at some other options.
How long does it take to get through the coursework?
That's a two-year program, and there has been a lot of talk recently on the, with the governor, possibly having some tuition-free assistance with the engineering techs in particular because there's such a high demand right now.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
I don't believe I've seen stuff that's happened. Yeah, I did text him, but I don't know if he's, again, yes, I'm going to give him a little bit more time. So I hope Lisa Markley is sitting in or she's going to stop on in. Oh, there's the hand raised.
Good morning, Board. Would you like me to go ahead and take care of this one?
Yes, that'd be great. Thanks, Lisa.
No problem. Quarterly report, we ended the quarter on September 30th. As you can see, I've highlighted the five departments that have exceeded the 25% of the year for expenses. Not atypical. These are departments that have a tendency to have some higher expenses at the beginning of the fiscal year. Overall, we've only spent 17% of our expenses, so we're looking good. Our fund balances are looking strong. We've only spent 20% of our general fund, 26% of our supplemental fund, 12% of our rural fund, and 22% of our secondary roads fund. For revenues, we have seven departments that are over on revenues. Again, those are fairly typical. The quarter, the quarter, the first quarter is pretty strong revenues for some of the departments. Overall, in countywide, we brought in 54%, which is about where it like 48%. At the end of September, we were at 48% of the taxes being posted. So that is really good collections on that end. So do you have any questions?
Just, so you have no concerns that we're at 26% for the general supplemental fund?
No, that's typical, Latifah, because we have to pay our annual insurance, liability insurance at the beginning of the fiscal year. It's due, it's the first of July, and it's always, it's always a large amount because it's right off the bat. We've worked with them, we've tried to convince them to bill us either every six months or to let us go a little farther into the year, but they like July 1st for some reason.
All right, that was my only question. Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Lisa. I'm going to see, is Dr. Passion on yet? And if not, we can go ahead. We do have a letter from pardon? We have a letter from the Board of Health. And again, Dr. Passion was going to try to join us, but it would be a little bit later in the agenda time with the schedule. He was not sure. So the Board of Health met October 2nd. Whatever, whatever date that was, sorry. The fifth, what's the fifth? And they had discussed the, made a recommendation for the Board to consider that all county employees be required to either submit a proof of vaccination or unvaccinated to submit weekly proof from a COVID test that they are continuing to be negative. There was a fair amount of discussion. Alyssa Wiggle was also at that meeting. We did both reiterate several times to the Board of Health that there is no guidance at this time from OSHA. There's also in Iowa, OSHA, we have not received any information. If I'm recalling their comments, their focus was this was a health consideration, and one had to make a motion. And it was approved four to one. There was one dissent. Vote on that, and I'm just an ex officio, so I'm not a voting member on it, but just of the members that are voting members, it was supported one vote. Alyssa, I don't know if you have any additional comments that you'd like to make from that meeting, since you're there as well.
This was to be in line with the President's order?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Let's make the comments. Yeah, that's where that.
Lisa's correct. They were looking at it from a health perspective, not necessarily a compliance perspective. They did question, you know, other counties or cities that were implementing this. I'm only aware of one that has implemented it, which is Polk County. They went ahead and have, they have their own vaccination and testing policy that they implemented. So yes, we recommend waiting. We discussed, there's no guidance out there right now. We anticipate some form of guidance from OSHA in, as an emergency temporary standard that they're supposed to be issuing. There isn't a lot of information out there. They thought maybe mid-October. There's just no set date for that, so, you know, when we get into the discussion, I can recommend some things to the Board based on the information that I have.
Is the mid-October date, did they, is that answered?
No, that's just speculation. So at some different, you know, I've heard it from various sources. I went to a conference. They were thinking October 13th. I don't know where they got October 13th. It does take a little bit of time to issue this, so I don't know if it was like, you know, three weeks they were thinking. I don't believe I've read the executive order. I've looked through some different things. I don't think President Biden gave them a specific date that I could find, and even I have some more, he's done some additional research. I couldn't find a special, specific date. We all know things tend to take a little bit longer than originally planned. So while we thought it might be out mid-October, it can be, it could be late October. It could be mid-October. I, I don't know. I don't think it'll take that long, but.
What are your thoughts on testing?
I think we're going to have an issue with supply. I think we're going to, you know, I don't know what will be, you know, there's a lot of speculation. What will be in the guidance? Well, you know, who will have to, who will have to comply? What type of testing? When will they, you know, is there a specific date? Is it PCR testing? Is it the other piece? I think, I can't speculate, but I have concern with supply. I don't know whether we'll be able to get testing kits. I know they've had some delays in testing, I believe, in Story County, from what I've heard. Public Health would probably have more information on that. But until we see the actual guidance, I don't want to speculate what, you know, type of testing. I've heard some are using the spit tests. So I know Polk County specifically has the PCR testing in their policy.
Is that the amazing test?
I, I don't know enough about whether, I think, are the kits that you get from Public Health, are they the spit test, the at-home ones? Are those PCR? Yeah, so I think they have full. I believe most of them have looked at the spit test. Otherwise, you have to have somebody come in and administer that certified for those, the other testing.
Would you ban the chest jangle science? They would be easiest, the quickest way, you know, and I always get results within 36 hours. So yeah, if we're going to be setting up our own testing.
So test Iowa, you can go to Test Iowa and request five home tests, up to five home tests be sent to your home. So you can just have them on hand.
And I'm not saying that's a solution to this, but since we talked, we talked about it.
And that's really the other thing, easy way to do it, because otherwise, every time, you've got to add the mail-in cost to the chest on to when you're going to get your results back. Getting fine and how are you there would be a good way to.
I don't, and just to chime in a little bit, I don't know if there will be specific that it's employer provided. I mean, this is, we just really don't know, have any information about this. I anticipate it will be employer provided. I don't know if you can utilize those kit. I mean, I just, I don't know what, what's going to come out in those in the guidance. It may be real specific, and it may be more broad. We just, we don't know at this point.
And just your comment on, you thought we'd know by the middle of October, it's an information. I can relate to the Board to, we also thought we have the final rule on ARPA dollars in September, and still don't have that. We don't really have an idea when we'll have that information. Questions for? Not a public hearing, but it's a discussion and consideration, so I don't. Can I share my concerns now or later? Sure.
Okay, I wasn't trying to sit on a target. I, I understand that the the reason that the Board of Health was talking about it, and I understand the reason why they brought it forward. I have concerns about implementing requirements without any guidance. I have concerns about implementing something now and then changing it later because we get different guidance and not having all of the information. Feels like the whole COVID experience has been do this, not that way, do this, do something else, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's good for our
And I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's good for our employees' morale. I don't think it's good for their, their feeling like they're getting consistent guidance from leadership. I want to keep everybody safe and want to keep our employees safe and want to keep everyone who's in our buildings safe. We all have family that we're worried about. We have measures that we've put in place in all of our buildings. We have barriers. We wear, we're wearing masks. I think, I hope, certain percentage of our employees have been vaccinated. I think we're at a point in that cycle that hopefully people are feeling safer with the idea of getting vaccinated. I would have concerns about moving forward with this without any guidance. That's, that's where.
I would agree. It's not that our control when we're going to get the guidance. However, indications are it's probably going to happen fairly soon. And I really agree with Supervisor Faisal of doing something and then having to change it a week or two later to be consistent with the OSHA guidance, I think would be a mistake at this point. We do have a lot of, we've done a lot of work over the last twenty months to make our employees safe. That doesn't mean they can't be safer. But I don't think that us right now saying, let's do this and implement it without the guidance, particularly because of the testing. And, and how, and in the exemptions, you know, that kind of issue. I think we need to see what guidance comes both from OSHA and if we're going to get any from Iowa. Maybe they just, maybe they just do the OSHA.
They typically adopt the OSHA standards, but, and it has to be, my understanding of how Iowa works is it has to be at the same level or greater. Like, I don't think they can adopt something that's less. Is that your understanding, Ethan?
That Iowa is bound by OSHA.
In a way, yes, even though the states that have it set up, that how everything says is they adopt their own standards, but they're not any less than the national or OSHA standards. If the state has a digital, they can put greater restrictions on different safety precautions or rules or regulations. And that's, I'm not an expert in that area, but that's, that's everything that I've looked into, how that works.
That's, that's good here. I would certainly not want local governments to be caught between a state response and a different state response. It's less or different. I hope that does not happen.
Yeah, I think I stated my concerns at that meeting, that we didn't have the guidance. You reiterated it as well during the meeting as well. The concerns with that we have done a lot in protecting our employees and people that come into the building here to the extent that we can, we've been following recommendations from IDPH and the CDC. And I think, you know, being kind of consistent in following OSHA recommendations will make.
I would also add that I appreciate the Board of Health's recommendation to us. I understand they are doing this from a health standpoint. And my vaccinations help increase, you know, help fight the pandemic, a better vaccination rate is something we would all like to see. So I appreciate that. It's not a disagreement with their recommendation as much as the, as saying that the time, time, timing of it at this point.
I think it's also worth commenting that it's bigger than just vaccinations. That it really, we're talking about mandating a vaccine, a vaccine. But that, I, I understand people's reaction to that and feeling protective of their own choice to do what they want. It has nothing to do with whether I agree or disagree with that choice. But I think it's important that we acknowledge where people are with all of this and how we're not just making really, really decisions that impact them and their personal choice and their personal bodies. It's very complicated. I, I am grateful to the Board of Health for the work that they do and for the guidance that they give us. And I also want to make it, make sure that we, let everyone know that we also value their own personal beliefs about how to handle their medical decisions.
Any further discussion? A discussion considerations, if there's any motion.
I would make a motion that we. Make a motion that we, that we not move forward, that we hold off on the recommendations from the Board of Health or requests of the Board of Health.
I already did.
I think you could hold off until, you know, if you want to make that type of motion until we have guidance on it.
I didn't want to say anything that would keep us from doing it. I would make a motion that we not move forward with this recommendation at this point.
That's my motion. Any further discussion? Hazel?
Mark?
Kevin?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. And I did text Dr. Passion, although I didn't email him, no, so I did text him. Next, with the upcoming agenda items.
At some point soon, it's, it's the fifteenth that we have applications due for American Rescue Plan funding by county supervisors. So I presume maybe next week, you at least have a report on how many applications we've received. I, I probably, it seems like we'll probably have a work session start, starting next week, do you think?
I think we're pulling this line out from Sandra Lee that are getting the applications in. They're, they're going to have criteria to make sure they, they submitted all the correct information, whether we do it next week or we hold off for another week. I don't know, Sandra, if you have any thoughts on that? Not specifically, I don't have a.
A number of applications that we have received. If I had to make a guess right this minute, I would estimate that we may have received ten, you know, or eight to ten, something like that. And that would be a mixture of external and internal. So I would just point out that on the twenty-sixth. And I'm going to bring it up now, since we don't have any meetings on, any work sessions. On the twenty-sixth, we have the virtual. Again, we have, and I have something that one o'clock, with that two o'clock. So I don't think Tuesday, the twenty-sixth is going to work for us for a meeting. And when is the one, some other date there?
We can look at the, maybe after the twenty-fifth. If you want to, or if we're ready, the next week, the nineteenth, we certainly could. I mean, or for another day next week. I wasn't sure the volume of applications that came in. That's where I wanted to just be considerate that those that were double checking those items that came in.
Why don't we have a brief meeting on the nineteenth and then we can set a date for the next meeting at that time? Sure, we just get an update. Two P M?
I, I have a two o'clock. I was interested in this two persons, so get a, so three fifteen, three thirty? Or what's on Tuesday, the twentieth, what point?
Possibly bridge tool, but most likely. We might have that in the morning. That's one of the dates we will prepare.
What about, but the afternoon?
About two o'clock on Wednesday, the twentieth.
Yeah, and Tuesday.
That gives, she can land another day. Full day. Okay. Twenty to the twentieth.
Two.
And that's just to talk about what we're having.
Yeah, not to, not to decision. Decision, if we just kind of look at what we're, touch base, I could base touch. Yeah, we look session. Any other agenda I was asking? I don't think I.
We'll do that while we go to public forum number two. Comments from the public, items not on this agenda, the board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirement of the meeting law, but may do so in the future. Did anyone want to make a public comment? There is one question in the chat. I'm not sure who the attendee is, just ask, curious why you have on masks that six feet apart and you've all been vaccinated. I think that we continue to wear masks because that is a recommendation of the CDC, whether you are vaccinated or not, that you continue to wear them indoors.
And that's what we're requiring.
And that's what we're requiring folks within our county buildings. If any other questions or comments, we will close public forum number two. Now we'll go on to the gate, not the segment, the updates.
I would just, there was something in the paper today. I also received an announcement that the Office of Chief Information Officer at the State of Iowa announced another $200 million in broadband expansion grants. And I think later this week, there's, there's a, there's a webinar on that. So I notified the telcos, we've been working with telephone companies here who do broadband. And I don't know if they're going to be doing anything with it or not. I did let them know that since our, this was according to the announcement I read, this was federal money that the state had received. So I went ahead and told them that we couldn't match federal money with federal money. So our American Rescue Plan funds wouldn't be available for a match as they had been with the NOPA six. But that, please contact us if you have some plans you think we might be interested in and want to deliver support. So I just did that this morning, so I don't know where they'll be looking at there. In terms of, in terms of meetings this week, I seem to have a pretty light week compared to last. Have a, we have a East Conference Board meeting Thursday, I believe at six. Yeah, so that, that'll be, otherwise I'm just working on various projects during this week. Looking at a lot of things that are coming up for us.
I have a Story County College Access Network meeting tomorrow. Mission Control, Mission Statement meeting tomorrow. And we also have the Ribbon Cutting and Rollings tomorrow evening. Thursday, I'm speaking at the Lions Club. And we have Conference Board meeting. I've got several webinars scattered all over my week. It's Zoom heavy. And the next Monday, I have the NACO Arts and Culture Commission that we're on, that I'm on. And then I also just wanted to give an update about the Ames Climate Action Planning process. There was a meeting last week where the team just kind of updated what the plan is moving forward and really just providing some educational information about what impacts climate change and what cities and communities can do moving forward. And there's going to be a Climate Action Discussion at City Hall that's open to anyone who would like to attend and learn. And that's going to be on October twenty-fifth from six to seven. I, I think it's a good idea for anyone who's able to go to attend because I think we have a lot that we can learn from what Ames is doing and expand a little more broadly into the county. So I'm really excited about that process moving forward.
Yeah, and I have, I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow. I will be out of the office on Friday. I have a lightning, this is actually kind of a lightning next week, and I look at the following with that. I'm about to be all packed up again. I do want to say yesterday, I sat through, I think it was, you could do it in person for BAZIN. When I participated in BAZIN, Iowa Works had a workforce kind of conference yesterday from nine to one. I have a bunch of notes. It's, they had various panels that talked about getting folks into areas such as the trades, nursing, engineer tech, plumbing, and what's available out there for those. So for example, they had a presenter from the Iowa Skill Trades and the Home Builders Association. They're two different nonprofits, talked about a couple of things that they have super high need for. HVAC, emissions, service tech, electrician techs. But they have mentorships through schools. They have work-based learning year-round. Project job coordinators and superintendents is an area for them. IPEW talked about their practicism or journeyman program, that's a better residential three and five-year program. They have like over four hundred involved in training. Their education is tuition-free. They get paid with benefits during their apprenticeship and often just get a job afterwards. And so just it really gave, you know, a wide variety of activities that are going on. Terry Boss spoke from Smart Work Connector, which was reaching out to kind of rural communities and trying to identify available opportunities available in rural Iowa. They had Bojean speak about the HIPHOP, which is an empowerment program. And then they also had folks from like Center Iowa Workers Program, United Way, the Department of Corrections. And what they are doing in regards to helping folks that are incarcerated with some job skills and what's currently going on at the new facility. Did question, did question around whether it could be replicated in other facilities as well. And they also had a DMAC book as well, what they offer. So it really was quite interesting, just some other avenues where folks could be directed. Because for example, I will note that the program that the Chamber in Story County are doing was also noted as to another avenue that areas are looking at how folks get identified with their, with their skill development or.
Got to mention, I assumed you didn't own the Bay City Council last night. Wendy Dryer talked about that, and she was very auditory about supervisors saying to several times for putting the Rescue Plan funds and keeping that program going.
Yeah, so there's a lot of what went on. I took some notes. I can certainly share that with you both. You know, try to type them up a little bit nicer, cut them up. There was a challenge during the presentation, like often times there is, you want to speak, doesn't have a mic in front of them and they turn this way and talk, but the mic's still here. So there are things that you missed or questions that were asked to the audience not repeated. So some of that was hard to hear, but overall it was, it was very good.
And we're going to see if that was recorded.
Yes, I was checking to see if it was recorded. Yeah. And that's all I have for updates. If there's nothing else, I take the motion to return.
Oh, I would say one more, one more thing that has been coming up a lot. I know that centralized intake is, is a lot of, they've got a lot of applications coming in for assistance. I know all of our agencies that help with housing have, are really inundated. really inundated with people who are in need of assistance. Um, so I guess as far as bringing something forward in the future, I, I'm not really sure where we're at. I don't know if we want to put together a, a roundtable to discuss what the current situation is or not, but I just wanted to get that out in in our discussions, because I haven't really talked to you guys at all about what we're seeing with housing needs. Just wanted to let you know again that there, there's a larger need than, um, I think we even anticipated as far as people needing help with rent and utilities. Emergency housing and, um, long-term housing assistance.
Did conversations with Karla or anyone from?
I haven't had any conversations with her in, in the past week or so. I've talked with Sandra several times. Yeah, I've been talking with her a lot.
And, and what we're doing right now with the Rescue Plan Funds is really a short-term strategy. That's, that's what we need is, you know, you can't do a short-term strategy and item because maybe something that's longer term and, and is scaled for, you know, financially.
Right, right. And, and this would, just keeping it, doing this is like. Exactly, which is, which is why I felt compelled to bring this forward right now, just to kind of start a conversation about, how do we address long-term, what that might be. I don't have any answers right now. I just wanted to let you know kind of where I'm at.
So are, are they need beyond asset?
I, I believe so. I don't know that for sure. I don't know that for sure, but.
Yeah, I, I think that would be my, and, and I know there just never seems to be enough money for any of the programs. So I, you know, I want to kind of quantify that. But that's what I should start to figure out is.
In terms of asset, I just want to remind the board that the board does not, the state county does not fund rent and utility assistance throughout.
Thank you.
Again, I think, I think that what we do fund there is short-term. It tends to be short-term. So, I know Leanne and Brenda Dryer have been doing some work on an action plan, a policy study. Does that fit in with what you're talking about? Not at all.
No, that, that doesn't address emergency shelter needs. It doesn't address, um, those people who are currently unhoused and needing long-term assistance to stay housed. That, that's important. The power of study work is important, but it, it addresses a different population.
Kind of high hopes about that program. I talked about it a couple of months ago in Hope County. Kids, tiny homes, but then I read some things and now it seems to be falling apart. Well, there's people who, right, so I, but, but that's the kind of thing in terms of longer range that I think, you know, we need to be looking at something other than just saying, here's another month, here's another month, here's another month, here's another month.
Exactly. Yes, yes. Like I said, I don't have any answers, but I just kind of wanted to. I mean, I have a couple of answers, but.
Yeah. It's the process of that for a question.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. I don't know if, um, you know, looking down the road, we want to, um, think about a roundtable discussion where we get all, everyone together who works on housing issues and really talks about what, what's the need? What do we need to be doing? What do solutions look like? Um, if it needs to be smaller conversations that happen before then? If we need to do a survey, another survey, but, um, to narrow down what the needs are, I don't know. Okay.